I'll now call the Winthrop Town Council Meeting of January 22, 2019 to order. This presentation is being fed live by WCAT on Winthrop Channel 22 and will be later recorded again not live. I would now ask everyone, please stand. And Councilor Inghman, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a roll call.
Councilor Inghman, here. Councilor Calla, present.
Councilor Christopher, here.
Councilor Terry, here.
Councilor Serto, here.
Councilor Conti, present. President Boncorri, here. President Beckham.
I will anticipate a motion to drop the minutes of the January 15 Town Council Meeting. They were circulated. I believe everybody got them in their emails.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Terry, seconded by Councilor Christopher. Followed, any questions, any admissions, any additions? Having none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll now call on a general information and recommendation in a presentation on the Winthrop's town water and sewer rates.
Sure.
Town managers, take any report.
Sure. First, I'd like to invite Dick Henson, Council Auditor, to just come sit at the table with me. So, in November, you all approved the financing for the Center Business District project. And last May, you vote, you were informed about the increase to the water rates at the time. Right now, we are in a situation that we need to discuss the water rates again because they, with the decrease of usage that was projected at the time to occur with an increase in price, we will not be able to pay our bills to MWRA this year. So, it's a combination of decreased usage and the future borrowing that we are going to take on for the Center Business District project that are funneling the needs for this increase. It's not something that I'm super jazzed about, but we are in this situation and, on the one hand, we need to pay the MWRA for the water usage that we have and we also need to pay for the financing of this project. So, last May, you all were, made a presentation by interim manager De La Hanty at the time concerning the water rates. It was at the May 1 meeting. And I want to reflect on some of the things that were presented at the May 1 meeting. Although it does not make any of this easier to swallow, these were things that were presented on May 1 and this was some of the notes that Dick Henson had presented. The rates in fiscal year 2018 look like they will be short of the budget in fiscal year 2018. It is important to note that the revenue projections are based on estimated usage, which is the base of how this has all gotten off track in the past, is that there was basically a miscalculation of usage compared to the rate. In, so Dick had also said, I project rates must increase at least $3. I think that it should be done on the May billing to reduce the revenue shortfall. Even if the rate is increased by $3, to $3 in May, or increased by $3 in May, I think you will have a shortfall of over $100,000. Now, so, I'm trying to presume this all with, these were noted at this original presentation that there was potentially a shortfall that you were already looking at with that $3 rate increase. In addition, Dick had noted and Terry noted as well, going forward, an increase on rates could cause usage to decrease, which is exactly what we had now. I think you will have to watch the first two billings of fiscal year 2019, August and November. Those are the high-usage billings. Now, in following this same train of thought, we have been paying attention to the bills. And the usage over the first six months of the year is 6% lower than it was in the previous year. What that leaves us with is a shortfall of the amount that we will recoup through our billing compared to what we have been billed from the MWRA. This is now when I'd like to kind of reflect on this graphic. It's on, it'll be shown on TV. You all should have it in your packet. To begin with, with that 1990 rate, which is the rate that was discussed at that May 1 meeting, you can see that blue line. And the blue line is what was projected and with the estimated usages at the time and that 1990 billing rate. The red line is the updated total projecting, projected billing at 1990 with a 6% reduction in usage. So, what you can see is it falls below that blue line. And that blue line, what that totals up to over the course of those four billing periods is how much we need to pay out. So, we need our total to match up with that. We've gone through two billing periods of billing 6% below what we should be and we need to get back, not only to level, we need to be above what we were previously billing at. So, that's why we need the line, instead of following the track of the red line that goes down and under the blue line, we need it to go up. So, it would be the green line. So, it would be a combination of the red line for the first two periods and the green line for the second two periods. So, that addition makes up for the first half of the year. The reason being, the first half of the year is when we have heavy billing. We are 6% under for that. Because we have already billed our largest usage periods at 6% under, we, it's not even just 6% over the entire year, we need to recruit the 6% from the first half and an additional amount because these are the lower billing periods for the second two quarters. Again, this is not something that I am excited to do. I know how this conversation went last May, but it is something that is necessary. For right now, it corrects where the rate needs to be to make it that we can pay for the bills concerning the decreased usage. In the future, this incorporates the amount of money that we will need to borrow for the Center Business District project. With this rate increase, I am committed to not coming back here and discussing the water rates until July 1 of 2020 at the earliest point. I know, or, yes, 25. And I know that's not the best guarantee in the world because that's only a year and a half away, but I'm very confident in this rate change being the only necessary rate change that we need for the next year and a half. And there may be additional assessments to be taken into case and different variables between now and then that may increase or change the water rate in the future. But from now until then, I'm comfortable with this increase in the water rate covering us both for the shortfall right now, I have no idea what that is, but that doesn't matter because it's not on the TV, and covering for the Center Business District as well for the borrowing that we'll need to take on with that. In your packet, I gave some additional information concerning the steps necessary to get to that $3 rate increase. I provided you with a fair amount of information that Dick Henson had put together that we don't necessarily need to go through every single element of unless the council would like to ask specific questions about some of the information. The last page of it, which is page 5, and I'm, now that I think about it, I'm not sure if the, if all.
Can I toss something in?
Go right ahead.
One of the things, I'm a numbers guy, so sometimes the graphs, you know, like, they mean, you know, that you can see things, but, so, the planned billing when at 1990, we thought that there was going to go out, based on the prior, average of the prior few years' usage, was going to send out bills of approximately $9,451. And not all of that gets collected. Some of it gets, about 88% of that gets collected, then it goes to lean and 93% of that gets collected, but it doesn't all come in in one year. And then there's other revenues that come in, smaller amounts that come in from, from the Water Sewer Fund. So, the number of $9,451 is what we estimated for billings. A 6% reduction in usage, when we prorate that forward for the next two billings, makes it so that there's only $8,875,000 in billings. So, it's a substantial in decrease in, in, in billings just because of reduced usage. So, if you, with the rate increase going from 1990 up $3 for the last two billings, the 9,451, we'll end up billing out 9,501. So, it's like within $50,000 of what the planned amount was. So, it's a big number and it's hard to swallow, but like, I like to look at it, the simple math of it is that you have a 1990 rate and, and you have a 6%, it was, the usage went down 6%. So, if you went up 6% on that, I'll use $20. If it was $20, it's $1.20. You have to make it up in half a year. That would be $1.20 for the year. You have to make it up in half a year. So, that's 240. And you're trying to make it up when it's the two smallest billing, usage periods of the year. So, it's just, it just kind of piles on to each other, to each other so that the rate increase just gets, gets higher and higher. And it's one of the things, I have a few notes that I just want to say to the council, is that in a lot of places, the decrease in usage would mean decreased costs from you, you for using water, for, for buying your own water or for costs for the water. But in the MWRA communities, the cost, you get assessed for your usage over the prior three years. So, even a decrease in usage this year, it doesn't mean anything to what you're going to pay for your water this year. It only becomes an effect when it gets averaged in over the next three years as you, if a consistent decrease of 6% for three years would mean your assessment from the MWRA would go by, down by an amount. So, that's, that's the water, that's the story on the water billing right now, so.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So, that $3 increase is per cubic foot?
That, it's the metric that water is billed in.
It's a hundred.
Hundred cubic meters.
Hundred cubic feet.
A hundred cubed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And what's typically billed for the average rate payer?
I haven't done that analysis.
I mean, what is that looking at as far as that increase on an average person's bill?
I have not done that.
No.
Oh, I actually gave this thing number to you previously. I don't know off the top of my head, but when you were talking about the Center Business District, I had done a calculation of the impact of the single-family home. I can, can I report that back to you? Is that okay?
Because I think, you know, people probably want to know.
Yeah, and that's, I can bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what I want to ask you. When do you need to have an answer by? I mean, you're making this a presentation and a recommendation tonight, but it's not on the agenda for a vote.
As the water, as the water commissioner, I'm allowed to set the rate and it's not up for a vote. This was more of an informational session concerning it.
Okay. So, the council will not be voting on?
Nope. This is just to inform you so when your constituents respond accordingly, I'm trying to help inform you so you have some of the answers available before you direct into an office.
Now, we have this.
Absolutely. Which is a lot of numbers and super complicated. This is.
I've got plenty more if you want.
Yeah.
Anytime anybody would like to sit down individually with me, I'd be happy to do that.
Dick is quite the Excel jockey. With that said, this has a breakdown of a $3 increase compared to a $4 increase. I'm much more comfortable with the $4, with the $3 increase. At the end of this too, this may result in maybe a year or two with increasing our reserves for the Water Sewer Fund, depending on when we borrow for the Center Business District project, which is not a terrible position that if our worst-case scenario is building our reserves as well. But we have a real problem that we need to fix in this current fiscal year with this and this water rate needs to, I'm alerting you to the fact that I will have to change the water rate unfortunately.
Okay, one more question.
Sure.
So, so this shortfall, what we have to make up is, is a little over $1 million. Is that correct?
The 6% decrease in billing is about $576,000. That's 6% usage decrease.
And that's on this chart you just gave us?
It's on this.
Oh.
This page.
This one.
Okay. Counselor.
Well, in a way it is, if you, if you take the planned $9,451 and on the blue and then what the, what it's trending towards in the red is that the $8,875, the difference is that 575, so $576,000. And the problem is you have to make that up in six months, lowest usage time.
So, basically, for, for people out there, it's, it's about a 15% increase. So, if your bill is average $800 a year, it's about maybe $120 extra a year. Simple numbers.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? When you said the usage has decreased 6%, do we know if the town's usage, can we separate out the, like, the schools' usage if they've stayed the same yet the, yet the public, you know, the homes, individual homes has gone down 8% or what, you know what I mean? Because the, because it's, we have nothing in budgets, you know, individual departments aren't responsible for water, right? I believe.
That's correct.
Correct. And maybe that's something we could think about when doing budgets or whatever, but I'm interested to see if, if the homeowners have decreased, you know, 8% or 9% and the towns kind of maintained, you know, I can't imagine the, the schools have used less water because of the rates. So, I would like to see if we have the ability to discern that, to get that information.
You know, we have, we have meters set up over town. Let me, it's something I had to inquire with Steve about. I don't have a necessarily good answer for it. I don't have that complete information. Sorry.
It is correct though that the town does not, the schools in the town, rest of the town does not give, in watering, what, you know, watering fields and things like that.
Right, that I think we should discuss also. And so, the 15, so the increase is recapturing the lost water, the usage.
Decrease in usage.
And also for the bond?
It's going to cover.
Anticipated borrowing?
Yes.
You don't anticipate another, just for the public, you don't anticipate another increase to cover the bond?
No.
Okay.
No, it's because, because it was, it would be a dollar, if you had a whole year to recapture, that'd be $1.20. You don't, you don't. So, the part of $3 would, over a whole year, would give you an extra, extra money in the following year to cover the increases in the budget and the, and the.
My last question is for now, do we, you know, we've done, Steve's done an incredible job with, I don't know how many miles, I know we still have a lot to do with water mains over the years. Do we know what our lost water is right now? I know we've been one of the highest, higher around, to the 26, 27% range or whatever it is. I'm wondering if that, if we've helped reduce that.
We have helped reduce it, but Steve is still working. There's a, there is a disconnect between how much usage MWRA has us for and how much we're billing out. And we're trying to capture what, what's going on there. We're, he's investigating. We're trying to figure out, like, it's, they've done the studies of like large-scale leaks and stuff like that. Like, they're, he's assessing the system to continue to, like, tighten it up. We don't want to be in that bad spot of the MWRA listening type of thing. Like, we want to, we want to bill what we're being billed. And it seems like there's a portion that's not being captured and we're working to figure out what that portion is so we can rectify it. We've, we've found some things Steve has over time, but he's continuing to investigate because it's, it's not jiving totally.
The DEP likes to see it at about 10%. So, you're way.
Double that.
Yeah, you're way over what the DEP would like to see.
So, this 15% increase is on top of the 17% increase that happened last year?
Yes.
That's correct. That seems like an awful lot in a couple of years. And it also sort of seems like we're increasing taxes to combat a conservation of water, which is a real perverse incentive for homeowners. And I'm wondering what alternatives were considered instead of this option to raise revenues in other ways or to decrease costs? What, what were the choices, what were the alternative choices?
You can't raise plenty of other ways to vote for the water bill. You have to use it for the water. You can't raise it like in other kind of user piece. If it's for water, it has to pay for water.
Okay.
Can I just ask to see if I, if you might have the information on the reserves that we might have, that we, you know, if the reserves were astronomically high, we could have used that to offset, but I, I know we're not, but.
I didn't hear the number, but we can.
I believe the reserve.
But they're under 100,000.
It was 46,000, free cash in the water fund was certified, I believe, at $46,000 in fiscal year 18.
Which is low too.
Very low.
On top of everything else.
It had been a million dollars three years ago.
You need to increase some sort of reserve because if we have pipe breakages or whatever we might have, plus the fact that we've eliminated our borrowing a lot with MWRA. So, you need to increase those reserves. I would, I would assume that's part of your plan.
Is there any kind of point that if we get ahead, we recoup, we're going to get this money back and with the loss of, less usage, that the MWR might reduce our payment? In the future, we might be able to reduce this back down?
If that nets out over the three years, it's a three-year rolling average that goes into people's usage. So, it's not necessarily like you stop using water for three months and you're going to see it on your next bill. It's over time. So, you know, it, I get it, it sounds like a perverse incentive, the way that this works, you're getting charged more for using less water. Like, I get it, it's not, the math isn't lost on me. It's the situation that we're presented with that the bill from MWRA needs to still get paid either way. And it's at an amount that we cannot pay if we don't increase the water rates. There isn't really a other funding source for it unfortunately. In the future, like I said, I don't want to touch the water rates again for another year and a half until we're into fiscal '21. Beyond that, depending on what our borrowing levels look like and things like that, we can definitely explore the idea of if the usage continues to be maintained at this 6% reduction and that nets out over the long run with our MWRA billing and things like that, then we could entertain a reduction in the water rates type of thing. I have, you know, looking back on the history of some of these setting of the water rates, there have been some decisions that have led to this case that you're in a bad position and you can only increase the water rate because the rates were somewhat kept lower than they necessarily should have been over time. So, instead of doing these yearly or every two-year check-ins on the water rates and changing them accordingly, there have been big jumps that have happened five, seven years apart type of thing. And unfortunately, we're at one of those times that it was a big jump and then because of the reduced usage, there's another big jump presented. But that said, I will continue to revisit this with you all, but I do not, after this, I do not want to really touch or have to talk about the water rates for the next year and a half.
That's Christopher.
So, you said that there was discrepancy that's larger than most town communities have. You said, I think, Winthrop's 20 and they recommend about 10.
Yeah.
And you said Steve's looking at it and I, I'm sure Steve's doing as much as he can with his, with the amount of time he has. But is there anything that we could do as a council to help support Steve in his efforts to figure out where these are?
Steve has brought in outside help to try to assess this. It's a, he's, he's trying very hard. It's the, I think it's a combination of our system that is old. In my manager report, I talked about some of the issues at Palmira. But we have an aging infrastructure that we're fixing kind of as we go and there are, it seems like places where we're just not capturing what's happening to the water and we're trying to assess that. But with this community being built on very little land and having water right in close proximity underneath it, the saltwater, I think there's just problems with inflow infiltration and things like that that we're not, well, that's more suicide, but we're not capturing things in our water sewer system. And Steve's alert to it and I have people that I'm going to reach out to in other communities to try to help us with this as well because I want to reduce that number. But it's, I've been trying to get a handle on this water rate in terms of both this incoming, incoming need that I was going to change things with it, but also in terms of the Center Business District and the potential lingering impacts of some of this like longer-term borrowing and stuff like that. Because honestly, in the long run, I want, with some of these fiscal policies that we're working on, I want to look to set like real debt limits and things like that. Like, I want, I want to kind of put up some more guardrails with these things and especially the rate. We should potentially set a fiscal policy that we revisit it every year or two, like, you don't let it go more than two years without revisiting the water rate and having like a presentation on it or something like that, just so that we try to keep it present and fresh in people's minds and not let it, not let it go a few years and then have the rate kind of all hit out of step and things. So, we are working on that and I can, I kind of look forward to further reporting to you about it, but Steve is working hard to try to capture what's kind of being lost in this because it's, I mean, it's dollars at the end of the day. Yeah. So, I have also.
Can I just add a couple?
Absolutely.
I just, I just want to make sure to keep you as, as informed as we can. So, at the end of this year, I do expect this rate increase will generate some free cash primarily because the water liens, there's an extra quarter of water liens. They changed the process in '18 and there were only three quarters worth of water liens in it. In fiscal year '19, there's five quarters. So, that's going to add some money to help generate the free, generate free cash along with the rate increase. So, I think that at the end of '18, there will be, at the end of '19, there will be some additional free cash. Again, another decrease in usage because of this and, and it's, you just don't know what happens because, I mean, then if you, if there's a promise to not go up on the rates, then it means that a budget has to be cut because, you know, that's, that's the, there's only two parts of this. It's, I, I do some other places that have, have water rates that are a lot, tiers and the tiered rates. And those are a lot more complicated to determine the rate because you're trying to project how many people are going to be within this tier of, of usage. And, and it goes up, the higher, the higher use to pay, pay more. So, that can be a little more difficult to, to determine what the rate should be. The only moving part in this one is usage. So, I mean, if, if you can set the rate and the total usage, if the usage goes down, then you're not going to take in, the total usage goes down, you're not going to take in the money. It doesn't matter what tier you're in. So, and, and I did want to say that the rate, as Austin said, it is projected to cover the Center project, but not any additional costs. That's, you know, so, I think you have to be really careful going forward. Oh, one other thing, the Center project, the borrowing schedule has not been determined yet. So, when the first full borrowing, a portion of it, $2,244, $2,444 has been borrowed. So, you have $244,000 in, already funded in, in the '19 budget. But the total project, once everything becomes fully funded, is $610,000. So, this increase is going to pay for that additional $386,000. If it doesn't happen so that the full bonding schedule is in effect in fiscal year '20, then you've just got to make sure that something else doesn't eat up that portion of the rate. You know, you can't like say, oh, we've got extra, we've got extra money because we're not going to get, do the borrowing this year, extra, extra room in our budget so we can replace it with something else. So, I mean, if, if that happens and you don't do the bond, and you don't do the bonding in, so that it becomes effective in '20, then that would generate free cash too. So, you could increase your reserves on that, that way too. So, it's just that you just have to watch, watch it to make sure that you're not using this rate to do other things that are recurring.
Just a quick question to you. If you've seen this in other communities where there's a tiered rate, how, how is that transparent to the, how is it transparent to the public where exactly they fall on that? Is there like?
There's a rate schedule.
Everybody's bill is, is online so that people can see.
No, it's a, it's a rate schedule. So, certain, like Brooklyn had commercial and then it had condos versus single-family houses type of thing. And so condos, because they had a rate that was dependent on sprinkler systems in their buildings and modern building construction, they were hit differently with it. And it was, it turned into a condo versus single-family homeowner discussion of, why should my rates pay for this? Why should, like, it, it was a fight between the two sides and it kept happening and it, again, it was just, the water rate had to be set. One or both sides would always be upset with the rate they were facing.
So, like some places, like the first $20,000 are at a certain rate, then the next, you know, $60,000 at another rate and then the next, over that. So, and it's just what you said, the DEP likes a tiered rate because it, because it forces people to use less. And that's, that's how the DEP looks at it. They would prefer a tiered rate where heavy users pay more. And, but it, you know, I, I was at a meeting last night and, and that means that a family with, with more kids, that, that they're going to pay the higher amount. And so, both sides have their challenges, you know, from, depends on how you're looking at it, you know. So, the single rate that you have, everybody's paying the same regardless of usage.
Just curious to see what the, how the implementation of that would, would it look like?
It seems like there's no right one unfortunately.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for either the town manager? Any other questions for either the town manager or our auditor, Mr. Henson?
So that, so just to follow up on this. This is out. It was supposed to go out at seven, well, it's going out at 7:40. We're putting this online. I'm communicating it as many places I can. It's going to the press. I do not want it to be that people didn't know about this. It will be reflected in the water bill that's going out on February 3rd, which is in the very near future. So people will be seeing this reflected on the bill that they get in their next water bill. But again, as I've said multiple times to you all, I do not want you all to feel like you're not informed about these things when the public comes to you and asks you questions. I want, it's my job to keep you informed about these types of things. That said, I assume questions will continue to come up about it. My office is at your disposal to deal with these questions and to continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Me too. Anytime, anytime. Something else that's, if I look at the backup, I'm happy to do it.
Thanks. Thank you.
Help me more than that.
All right. We'll now go into public hearings. We have no public hearings for this meeting. Public comment. The audience, public comment? Not many public here.
Just to add the conversation you had at the MWRRA meeting last Wednesday, this is going to be inconceivable to believe, but they have the documentation. City of Boston is using the same amount of water right now as they did in 1920 with the build-out of South Boston, the convention center, with cow washers using brown and gray water, with the conservations being built in, with the leak detection they do. So the MWRRA on a much bigger scale is in the same boat you are. Costs us the same money to maintain our watering store crews, the same money to maintain our water system. But if you were a grocery store, you stopped selling groceries, you can't pay the rent anymore. And, but again, if, you know, I'll get the council, their documentation to show, City of Boston is using what they used in the early 1920s. Does not seem conceivable, but they have the numbers to prove it. Low flow toilets, low flow showers. You know, our high school is brand new, green building. We have all brand new water meters. Maybe they're not working enough, maybe. So there's a lot of, you know, different things that are happening every day that are plus the price to boot.
How did we fare? If they had that count for Boston, did they have the same kind of count for Winthrop whether we were, you know, three times as much as we were in 1920 or-
Well, you know, they've done all the, the hill. I've never seen so much infrastructure work being done. But again, we've had a building boom going on. Everybody's upgrading their bathrooms, their kitchens, their boilers. So, you know, we are modernizing as a community, which is going to hurt how much water we use, but.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. We have no correspondence. Are there any committees that would like to report? I know there were no meetings tonight. Are there any committees? Hearing none. We'll go into our town manager's report. And I see you have quite a bit.
I do. Let me say, I'm pleasantly surprised that there's no public comment. I was trying to prepare for it. That said, I know. That's why I don't live in town. So, to begin, I just provided you with a memo that Denise passed around. Because it's the most recent thing, I would like to discuss that. It's the January, it's the storm report one. Did you pass that around?
Yes.
It's the, it's the last one she passed around. What I'm trying to give you all concerning the storm that happened this weekend is kind of a breakdown of, one, how Public Works addresses snow events. So the first section of bullets, the five bullets, concern how our Public Works Department is prescribed to work through a normal snow event. It's kind of an order of operations. The second series of bullets deals with what happened with this storm. Briefly to hit on that, unfortunately, we cleared the snow and the ice came right afterwards. It is something that we were trying to plan for going in. We knew it was a concern when we met last Thursday concerning our storm preparedness. Our major concern was not necessarily the snow itself. It was the rapid freeze that was happening late Sunday and over Monday. And that, and ended up being the problem that we had to deal with. So the real things that hit with that is that the crews were plowing until 8:00 AM on Sunday when participation ceased for several hours and at which time they switched back to a townwide salting effort, trying to get ahead of the impending ice. The temperature, though, allowed for some of that salt to wash away, unfortunately. In addition, the temperature then dropped before the effectiveness level of salt, which we were expecting, when the sleet and freezing rain lingered for more hours. So not only was our salt getting taken off the road, the effectiveness of salt stopped at that point. There's a temperature that it gets to and it just stops working. And that's how cold it was out. The plows were redeployed at 1:00 PM to try to scrape ice to get in front of this storm. Unfortunately, not as successful as we would have liked. And there was another 200 tons of salt that were applied after the second round of plowing, and it didn't penetrate due to the extreme temperatures. It was something that I feel like Public Works handled to the best of their abilities with the resources that they had. And again, the problem that we had tried to anticipate was something that we unfortunately just couldn't deal with. And then in terms of the cancellation of school today, that's on the backside of this memo. This is something that is at a decision that the superintendent is allowed to make. That said, I was in constant contact with department hands and the superintendent throughout the storm on Sunday, well, on Saturday, Sunday, and on Monday. I, again, leave it to her discretion, but I made my opinion felt concerning the opening of schools today. I was very concerned because we do not provide buses to our students. They need to be brought to the school in one form or the other, whatever mode they need to come to. I was not comfortable with the condition of the walkways, with the amount of ice that was on the walkways, having kids walk over those ice ways. It's a large amount of liability that I did not want to open the town to, between our students, our teachers, and in addition, some of our municipal buildings. So although it was not my decision, I let Lisa know my thoughts on it because it was an unfortunate proposition to think about putting kid safety at risk in terms of just getting in and out of school even from a car. Lisa's explanation of what she communicated with the school committee is also included in this memo. And again, my office with Public Works is striving to provide a high level of service. We met the constraints of our service levels that we couldn't deal with, unfortunately. That does not negate the work that was done and around town, coming from Holliston into town and driving roads around here, and having a sister-in-law who had her flight canceled on two consecutive days because of stuff at the airport, which is in close proximity to us. The reality is, is that we're essentially par for the course. I know our schools were closed and there's other schools, our adjacent neighbors were not in the same situation that we were. But Quincy schools were closed and there's other schools very close to us that were closed as well. And, you know, it's an unfortunate circumstance that we couldn't deal with this ice situation, but I would rather be safe than sorry. So we will continue to learn from this storm and future storms and try to do better in the future. But with this storm, it was a unique weird one that I'm happy we're on the other side of. And like outside and across the street, things like that are in significantly better condition than they were even this morning. And as I went around town during the day, the crews were working extraordinarily hard. So I wanted to address that because I had thought that was going to be part of public comment. That said, in the town manager's report-
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did some question, the streets are clean, or the sidewalks are clean around the schools now?
Yes.
For our kids for tomorrow and on-
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
As all of the councils make concern is public safety.
Absolutely. Lisa and Steve have been working on this all day. This actually may spur a capital request from the school side concerning sanding equipment on one of their trucks so that they're better able to work with some of the walkways that are under their purview as well. So again, it's a learning experience. It can help inform our budgeting for the future. And it can help inform us setting service level agreements with the community.
Sure. I was going to say, you mentioned one now, a capital request, but when you said that it was performed to the best of their ability with what they had. So what in this case, I mean, I know I gave up shoveling out my driveway with all the ice too. So I totally did. But in this case, what are some of those things that you can think of? Is there other pieces of equipment that we could have used to avoid this that we don't have?
So it's not necessarily equipment that we don't have. It's the age of our fleet that we have in place right now. We have old, debatably unsafe equipment. That's something, when I talk about a capital plan, needs to be incorporated into a capital plan. When we develop that, there needs to essentially be an amount of money that we're putting towards DPW to replace the fleet over a set period of time in the near future. Those trucks cannot keep up with the amount of work that we need them to do in town. So that will be brought up this year in the capital plan. Well, so this year's capital is going to be a series of requests, but also a discussion about the building of a five-year plan and how to best assess that. The DPW fleet is one of my largest concerns. Personally, I haven't seen a fleet in this condition in other places. And that is something that I want to figure out how to allocate funding towards in the future. Because DPW at times are restrained by their manpower, but they're also restrained by the equipment that they have available. And if we're looking to give in one place or the other, if we're not looking to add people, we need to get their equipment in better condition. So that, amongst other things, may come from this storm.
So that, we had our first, we had our first storm last year. I think we, we had a bunch of trucks that were pulled off. Is that, did that occur again this time around? Or is this-
No, it didn't.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll tell you a question.
Two parts. Did we subcontract any of the work done on the plowing and sanding?
I do not off the top of my head. That's something I can, I can find out.
And is there any material other than the sand that people either pre-treat streets with that we just don't have access to or don't use? Or is, is the sand, the sand the same for everybody and that's all they use? Or are there different materials you use depending on the weather?
One moment. Sure. So there are different materials. That said, they all come with different prices. The sort, this is my Somerville time. I learned a fair amount of salt and where it's sourced from. There's different countries and there's different places where you can have access to it. It depends on the conditions of your storage of it as well, if it's as useful or not. In Brookline, we sprayed a solution, a liquid solution down on the streets prior to a snow event. That's something that I know out near me in Ashland, they do as well. Issue with that is that it leads to, there's a claim to be made that it's leading to increased corrosion of fire vehicles on the underside because of the interaction with the stainless steel. So that's, that's what they claim there. So it's, it's something that we could explore. It's not that there's necessarily like one best option for it, but we could continue to explore other types of treatment solutions that fit within the same like price metrics that we have. And I can have Steve kind of check back with us about those if you would like to. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any more questions about the storm? All right. Seeing none. The rest of the report concerning Palmyra Street, that inquiry is addressed in this email per Steve Kala. The Taps Avenue enforcement that you requested is included in a PowerPoint that's attached to this. And then I am bringing it to your attention that I would like to form a solid waste advisory committee. Councilor Lutteiri and I have discussed this previously. And I believe I brought it up with Councilor Lucerno as well. So contract is expiring in the near future for our solid waste contract. With that in mind, I would like to have a committee explore some of our solid waste regulations here and how we want to interact with the waste stream in Winthrop. There's a few very attuned individuals in town that I think would be useful on such a committee. All of that said, I have pretty simple charge that I'm looking for people to discuss a solid waste solution for the town of Winthrop. The mission, I would think, would be ultimately to promote increased recycling participation by Winthrop residents and businesses to effectively decrease the waste stream and create a more sustainable community. Trying to leave it broad because there are multiple different ways to go at this animal, whether we do standardized bins or bag programs or keep it the way that it is. There's all different ways to go about impacting the waste stream, talking about splitting, having a separate contract for recycling versus our waste. If we want to have curbside pickup of composting, those types of things, I would like this committee to explore those so that I can then report back to you all as a potential, if there's a new fee associated with it or anything like that. I want to have a report to fall back on from a committee that's been working on it for a period of time. It's something that we won't really be exploring for this budget, but it would be something to explore in the fiscal '21 budget. But I think this would give them enough lead-up time so we'd have that information in hand for a bunch of conversations that we'll be having about a year from now. And this is important work. I've, I kind of joke about this, but I read a case study about trash in grad school, and I never thought I would ever deal with trash in my job. And I've literally done the same type of project in Somerville and Brookline and now here. It's a feasible thing. You have to go through the public discussions about bin size and all that type of stuff. But when you come out on the other side, you will have cleaner streets just because you have standardized bins. I will fully state that. It deals with rodent things, beautification, all those types of things all tie into getting your trash into bins instead of in bags and stuff like that. So this will be beneficial. It can lead to better street cleanliness and all those types of things as well. But it's something that's way past its time of necessity here. So unless there's any questions, can we move on to the next round?
Can I have a question? What Taps have, because I see that we've got like, an enormous amount of water controls that we had in 2017 and '18 and doubled the citations and ten times the enforcement-directed patrol. So I think that's good. But do we have an idea as to, since we changed the speed limit to 25, has there been an increase or a decrease?
This is so-
And is there anything letting people know it's 25?
I cannot answer on the signage, but I have inquired about the signage. This was the best information that the police had available as of this time to talk about the specific enforcement area. When you get to, from what they told me, when you get down to a more granular level, there's so few data points of the number of citations. When you have the total number of citations in a calendar year are five. When you look at a month, there can be months without data and that type of thing. So they were, they did year over year because that's the best comparison mechanism that they had. But Councilor LaCorte, if there's different information that you're looking for, I can ask for it. But again, this is, this is the limitations of the information that they have. So if you continue, I think it's useful, we'll continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. I'd like to take a look at the report and perhaps I'll have follow-up questions to you at another time.
Not a problem.
Okay. Are you complete?
Yeah.
Any questions for the town manager? Please go through the chair. Any? No questions?
This is the first time I've heard you mention through the chair, just so you know. I'm a Robert's Real Sky. I like it. Don't worry.
All right. We have no school update because Ron is not here. And as you see, the agenda's really light. We have no old business that completed everything at the last meeting, and the new business, there's a motion to authorize bonding to the amount of $586,000 from the MWRRA for the Center Business District infrastructure project. The motion is before us, came from the town manager. Is there a second to that?
I'd like to-
Seconded by Councilor Christopher.
I'm sorry, the motions to refer to finance?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the mega motion of the council vice president just refers the following financial motions to finance committee.
Yeah, that's fine. You can, you can- Yeah, that's fine, you can, you can.
Okay, I will do that. I will refer this motion to authorize bonding in the amount of $586,000 from MWRA for the Senate Business District Infrastructure Project directly to Finance Commission. I will transfer, motion to transfer $105,600 from the capital stabilization to fund Phase Two of design engineering on Revere Street TIPs project. And then, out of the TIP funds, and I will refer that to Finance. There's a motion to transfer $30,000 from the General Stabilization Fund to the Senate Business District Master Plan Phase Two. I will also refer that directly to the Finance Committee. And there is a motion to transfer $5,000 from free cash to reimburse the performance bond deposit. And I will also refer that to the Finance Committee directly. Okay, we have one other motion.
I asked the Council Clerk to set up a Finance Committee meeting for 6:00 PM on February 5th at, in the Hobby Room if available, if not, conference chambers.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next, I had one degener, is a motion to relocate the voting location. That was the motion by Councilor Terry, is that correct?
This was just a discussion motion, I think, Town Clerk to be here too. But it's, it's, you know, we went over this about a couple of years back. I'm not sure if it should be ruled, but I would like to send this to committee. If we wanna have discussion, that's great. My concern with this is.
I think we have to have a motion, we're gonna have discussion. So, I believe if you're making that motion to refer it, if there is a second? Is there any second? Motion been seconded by Peter Christopher, now we can discuss it.
Thank you. So.
There you go.
My thought process with this, again, is just, and somewhat like the rates, I think it should be discussed more often than not. We had a system for many years and then we lost use, we don't use the middle school to its potential anymore. And with the new high school, we thought it would be nice to have the polling there for a little bit and this and that. We've had some changes where we brought it out of Precinct Four. We brought that to the Senior Center, then we brought it back into Precinct Four and to build the drive-in. And I think that, I get concerned with the school calendar and I'd like to ask the school committee their thoughts on this also. Because if we have special elections or multiple elections, every time we have an election, we have no school in our town. And I, and I think that's a disservice to the children of the town. And they have to work on 180-day schedule, calendar, so it could potentially be an issue for them. And I know, you know, our Town Clerk was very fortunate to have someone who does such a great job. I mean, now we have the early voting, which has been a whole nother issue for Kala to work with. I personally like the voting at the middle school gymnasium. I know there are issues, are potential issues that the Town Clerk has with it in terms of handicap accessibility and electricity and such. Now, I do know that we just put $400,000 into that particular part of that building four years ago to have it, you know, I, I'm assuming it had to be for handicap accessible or we wouldn't have had a school there. Our children are still using that. And I know that, you know, at some point relatively soon, I hope we make a decision on, on that building because then we could put the adequate work into it to bring it up to better standards. But I just think for ease of, and again, I listen to my precinct constituents and, and, you know, there seems to be a lot of people that thought the location, the parking, everything else worked better at the middle school gymnasium. Also, it enables us to maintain school open. So, I just think it's a discussion that should be brought up. I know the Town Clerk has, is much more the expert on this than I am and I encourage her to, to share her concerns too. And if we did even consider it, I'm, you know, the best thing about Kala is Kala will work whatever's given to her in the end. But, you know, I think it's important, that is something that we need to discuss and I think we should have the schools' thoughts on this as well. And if there are issues with that, with that middle school that we can't even have voting on there one day, then I don't know how we're using it on a regular basis and charging people rent and everything else for it if it's not suitable. So, that's all.
Anyone else wanna discuss this?
So, Councilor LaTiri, so how would that affect, you know, if we did do that? Say we did change the voting locations and then something came along and a development was started for now that middle school. Now we have to change everything back again, so.
Well, we've changed it many times in the, in the, in the most recent years. And we don't know if there's a development for that middle school. We don't know when and if, when it's gonna happen, if it's gonna involve the gymnasium or not.
Oh, I see, okay.
Doesn't affect the school itself, the voting.
And also, Councilor Lucero?
I'm just curious, and since Carla's here, maybe I can ask her what the difference is in turnout from those two locations? Because I feel like the last couple of times that we've had it at the middle high school, the turnout has been particularly high. So, from like a participation point of view, keeping it where it is versus moving it back somewhere?
I think that's an interesting point. I just don't know if location really drives voter participation.
Do you wanna join on that switch?
Sure. I just don't know if location drives voter participation. So, I don't know if those numbers would really be something to think about. I certainly could find those numbers and report back. I don't know, I sent a late-day email. I didn't even realize this was on the agenda till late Thursday. So, I sent a late email to you folks this afternoon with my thoughts. I don't know how many of you have been able to read it. We'll do whatever you like. I don't, I don't wanna be disagreeable. We'll, we'll vote anywhere you want us to.
I understand you will, whatever we want. But what are the logistics of having, you know, Wi-Fi there? Having the right, you know, electricity? I know we had a problem one year, because we were there, we had to bring in generators.
Yeah.
And I don't know the situation, what's going there. I'm sure you know more about that than I do.
So, I don't know exactly what state the gym is in now. I know Councilor LaTiri's right, the town did put some money into it when it was the high school. I think that if it's worth discussing, maybe you should refer it to committee and we can find out a few things. To your point about having folks in there and letting the kids use it and renting it right now, I agree with you. Folks are using it, but 6,000, potentially 6,000 people will be using it on one day when we have elections there. So, that's different than 50 kids using the gym. Now you're talking about 6,000 people in there for 15, 16 hours of the day using the facilities and all that entails. So, it's, it's, it's a, it would be a busy day in that gym. And I, from my opinion, I just don't think it's a great idea. You know, to just briefly, same, we're talking about, I guess I'll just briefly mention some of my thoughts. Right now, we're talking about two and five, which are in the Cummings in Precinct One, which is in the high school. So, I think that's your motion, that all three precincts.
I mean, again, just to start, it's not necessarily the motion, it's just for discussion.
Right, right, absolutely.
I would envision three precincts going back to one, two, and five.
Right, so one, two, and five, which was what we used to have there. You're talking about roughly 6,200 voters, which is roughly about 50% of the town. So, this would impact a lot of us. My suggestion is that we have Mr. Leggie go through the building and see what his thoughts are. I don't know how frequently he's in there or if he could sign off or at least give his idea about what he thinks. I need to know about Wi-Fi because that's what we need for our poll pads. Also, Secretary Galvin's office, when we moved out of those, when we moved out of the middle school and went into the Cummings, and when we moved into the Senior Center, Galvin's office comes through and does a polling, plays accessibility survey and points out deficiencies or where we need to improve. So, I think that that would be useful. So that once we do those things, if everything checks out, then at least we know we've done our due diligence and we are ready to rock and roll there. But I think it would be premature to vote to do that unless we do those things.
And I, through the chair, I absolutely agree. But I think that it's great to be able to say, hey, we can do this, now we can discuss it. Or you know what, it's not even feasible, it's gonna cost us X amount of thousands of dollars to potentially do it. But I wanna be able to say, hey, because I do have a lot of people that think it's much easier to vote there than to vote at the Cummings School where the parking's tighter, it's in the back, there's not as many spaces. You know, campaigns have argued about the signage and where they could put it and where they can't, think it's easier at the middle school.
Honestly, it's surprising to me because nobody has ever, you know, I spoke with Chief Lanigan briefly today. He didn't really have issue, I don't think Lisa had issue. And we've not had, I mean, I think we've had two or three folks, AG, I wish it was back at the middle school. But you're bound to have two or three folks.
And some people just don't want change anyway.
Yeah, change is tough.
But, and I think a big thing is that the no school. I think that that, you know, on a, on a year where you could potentially, we've had three elections in a year with special elections.
Absolutely, we had six one year. So, what we do now is we're actually already communicating with Lisa and the school committee for next year's calendar. We know we have two. And then a special would be a special. The school plans professional development days, as I'm sure you're aware, to work that into their schedule. I think we've been doing a great job managing it. So, the only last point I would say is, as difficult as it may be for the children if we had a special and we had to cancel school and they would have to make it up at the end of the year, I think I would weigh that with, can the middle school at 151 Pauline safely have 6,000 people go through it in its current state? And does it make sense to have everybody, again, be reeducated about where they're gonna vote if you're talking about development or demolition there in the very near future? And I don't know the answers to those questions.
Counselor, so.
I was thinking too, that one of the big pieces of this, that we need to get the parents' feedback. Because on one hand, working parents, they gotta take a day off when their kids are out of school. But on the other hand, that helps them with their civic participation to actually be able to vote. What's most important to them, you know, I need to take that into consideration as well.
It sounds like it's suggesting that we do studies and send this to a committee. And I had no motion to do that, but I also, you know, what committee would be proper for this? You know, we have just six committees, Finance Rules, Public Health, Public Works, Economic Development, Capital Assets, and Appointments Committee. So, I mean, if that's your intention is to send it to a committee to look at over the next period of time?
Or if it's just work you want me to do?
What I would be happy to do is, is ask the Town Clerk to look into Galvin's office, look into Mr. Leggie, and to just see the logistics, let the Fire Chief walk through the building, and just see the logistics and see, this is their recommendations, and then come back to us and report that. And then if we fail, it's something that we can go forward with, we could, we could put it to rules and ordinance or whatever.
Sure. Did you have a, I'm happy to do that, that report?
A motion to table this to a certain time would be in order?
Just so that I know how quickly I need to get?
In the spring, if you come back by the springtime. I mean, I'm not asking, you know, I don't anticipate this being a change right away. But I just think it's something we, we should think about.
We can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor.
So, I'd like to make a motion to add to.
About that, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to follow up too, because I, my, my concern with the old middle school is that the systems there may not be reliable. And then the risk is that you're calling into question the whole integrity of, of the town election. And so, I would require to weigh that also in whatever work you put together.
Yeah, including such things as internet access, accessibility.
You know, because if the internet goes out and it just simply isn't as reliable there.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll just add that, I'll make a comprehensive report and we could talk about that later.
Issues that we discussed tonight.
Austin has other ideas that are even coming up now as we speak.
So, you gotta make the motion to table the floor.
We had a motion to refer.
No, you have motion to, no, no.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to ta, table the motion we made this evening.
Okay.
And I'd like to ask the Council Vice President that we request that the Town Clerk looks into the issues we discussed tonight and comes back to us with the report within three months.
I think she got the gist, that's what we would like. There's no discussion on the motion to table, so all those are, significant. Hi. So, the post, motion is tabled. It's not, it's not on the agenda, but we have one other bit of new business and that is, at some point, we have to elect a person for Precinct One. And I, we have to give notice out there and have people have an opportunity. I know, I see two people that are interested in their job right, right now. And I'm glad to see that they're interested enough to come to a meeting. But I think we have to put it out to have an election on the February 12th meeting for the Precinct One Council.
February 15th. February 15th meeting?
No, the meeting would be. Wait a minute, it would be the February 19th.
19th.
Yeah.
February 19th. And I think that we need a motion to do that, if someone is.
Councilor Vice President might be there, I'm sure.
Well, I don't know when else we can do it, because somebody's gonna be away all the time. I know I'll be away the 5th. It's gonna be other people I know going away as well during the beginning of February.
Is that school vacation?
Yeah, it's kinda like school vacation, yeah.
Is that?
Can you explain the process?
Pardon?
The process that you're gonna go through?
The process is that we have to put a notice out that there is an opening and allow people to come to us saying they like the position. And then we have an election amongst the council for a new Precinct One Council.
And just to follow, yeah.
Yeah, and they would fill out, determine to the next election, which would be in November. And then someone would, you know, they have to rerun in November and then November, whoever else can run.
And in November, it would just be a two-year spot to go to the, the length that was originally voted. So, it'd be an appointment for six months, an election for two years, and then a regular election for four years after.
I think, Council President, I think it's very important for the residents of Precinct One to have representation as soon as possible on the council. And with so much kind of on our plate coming up in the near future, I don't wanna see us kind of get bogged down in, in this. I think the sooner that we get someone in for Precinct One, the better.
I agree. I just don't see that being able to do it before the 12th, I mean, the 19th. Unless you wanna have a special meeting on the 12th and not, and then only have, you know, cancel the meeting on the 5th and do it on the 12th? That's fine with me, but somebody's gonna have to make a motion to change the rules because that would give us enough time if we did it on the 12th.
Council Vice President, I would suggest that we have a motion for the 19th, but have, I think it's important that we had applications in by the 5th. And if we have multiple application, if we have one application, it's, if we have five, you might wanna interview them. I would think that the councilors would wanna get, I mean, I know it's a small town, but we don't know everybody in the town and there may be people with different qualification, whatever. So, I think it's important that we would ask for letters of interest to be in by a certain date and then for us to vote on or have interview. And if that date comes in on the 5th, we might wanna have a special election just for interviews on the 12th. We don't know, we don't know how many candidates we're gonna have.
Well, I know we're not gonna just have one because I think we have two that are right here that are interested.
I'm just putting it out.
So, you know, I, I, that's fine with me. I tell people they have to have applications in by the 5th. But see, any council can nominate anyone at the time.
They could.
So, I don't know, you know, we need actual applications. We should have applications or resumes, but on the 12th, anybody can nominate anybody that's on this council. Whether they have submitted an application or a recommendation or not, because it's an open election. I think we just need to determine what date you wanna do it. If you wanna do a meeting the 5th and the 19th, or you wanna have just one meeting on the 12th and do it then. I don't know how much business, but like, see, this meeting tonight, there was absolutely nothing really much that we had to do. It was good to get the reports that we had, but, you know, we already had a meeting just one week ago. Nothing has happened in between. So, let's think of that for February, where people are gonna be, I've been assured people are gonna be away. I know at least two or three people in the council are going away at some time in February, so.
So, what if you gather the applicants and you give the councilors a chance to speak to whoever's applying? And then what if you take a vote the first meeting in March? Does that work?
Yeah, I think that's dragging it out to one.
You only got two meetings in February, huh?
I think that's dragging it out to one, over March.
I was gonna say.
Counselor, so, let's have a discussion on this issue.
Yeah, so, I was thinking that if, I'm fine with the 19th for a vote, but if it's appropriate for the Committee on Committees to meet on the 12th for those people who have already put in their application for the 5th and people can ask them questions, I can always, if it's appropriate for the Committee on Committees to have a meeting on the 12th, invite the candidates to come and then the rest of the councilors can come and ask them questions. I mean, we could do it that way if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Figured I'd throw that out there, if that's an appropriate action plan for this.
I think it's as good as any.
So, we want the motion to have applications in by the 5th and an election on the 19th?
Yeah.
Is that correct? I have that in form of a motion? Do I have that in formidable motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And I second.
And there's a second to that motion. So the motion is that we put a call out for nominations and applications for people that are interested in precinct one seat, and those applications should be due in by the 5th. But that's not, you got to be buying that, I mean, somebody else can come in on the 6th, say, and then we will have an actual election on the 19th. Okay? But the ones that apply by the 5th will be interviewed by the Appointments Committee on the 12th. Is that correct? Is that what you want me?
Yeah.
The people that get applications in by the 5th will have an opportunity to go to the-
After this vote, then-
Appointments Committee on the 12th. Okay? Any further discussion on that? Here we've done all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is unanimous, okay, to do it that way.
And then, meeting on the 12th for a Committee on Committees, if we can schedule that for, let's say, 6 o'clock?
Okay.
And if those people who are interested can't make it, then we can revisit that. But once we get the applications on the-
Well done, we're coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can just, whoever sends them in, if you can just reply to them to say-
What's happening?
This is what's happening.
Yep, okay.
Okay, public comment. Is there any other further public comment? Anybody?
I just have one quick question for Austin before we wrap up. Last year, we asked you with the Diversity and Inclusion Committee?
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could potentially have that for us on the 19th too?
Well, I'm trying to get a charge together, but yes, I, that's something I've been working on for you.
Yeah, I was just thinking that you could report back to that, and bring something to us on the 19th, and we can go from there.
Sure. Can I note on one other thing in the public?
Yes.
So, just to reiterate what I was talking about before concerning the storm stuff, I want to make sure it comes across that Public Works did a very good job. I am not faulting this department at all for it, those guys worked hard and in extraordinarily long shift, and the legal term force majeure comes to mind in terms of finger of God, like, this is one of those storms that those guys were limited in what they could do to address the storm. And they did the best that they could with the equipment that they had, and it is not, any of the questions that come up are not things that fault the people who are in those positions trying to do the work that they're doing. They're working hard, and I give them all the credit in the world, because I don't drive a snowplow, they do it, so I can drive my car around, which is too low to the ground anyway. They did a good job, and what I want to continue to do is give them tools so they can continue doing a better job. They did a great job with the tools that they had, I want to continue giving them tools. So maybe in the future, when a storm like this comes along, you know, again, super unique, and not something that we could be totally prepared for with the type of storm, but maybe we would have the ability to kind of chip away at that ice a little bit better with some different tools. But those guys worked incredibly hard, and I do not want to act like it was through any fault of theirs. It was the position that the department is in because of a few different things, and they did all that they could to get the town clean. And they did a good job, circumstances standing, so they did a good job. We need to continue to work to put them in a better position.
I agree, 100% we do, they did a fantastic job. I was out in the streets, and I went by, I know, I talked to you, I talked to our emergency management chief, and things were under control. We were very fortunate in this town that we didn't get hit, like we got hit last year. The only place the flood, I think, was the Elks parking lot in Belle Isle, and there were no floods of Pico, there were no floods of Bantry, and the roads, the main roads were clear right away, and the side roads are all clear now. So I think they did a fantastic job.
Absolutely.
And accommodate them.
I agree. And then I also wanted to note, I didn't hit on this before, but the MMA Annual Conference was last week, some of the councilors came to some of the events, but it was a good learning experience for me, as always. It's nice to see the governor speak, and to learn about some local regulations that may be impacting us concerning, I went to a session on marijuana policy, because I would like to be prepared for it in the event that the ballot question goes away that-
Where were you sitting?
I was sitting in the back. I got the check in, don't worry, that's all that matters. I hope Maya doesn't watch this video. And then I went to, in a session concerning like the modernization of local government, but it's always a good resource to have, and I get to talk with my peers about problems that we face in Winthrop, and how their communities have dealt with the same type of issues, and how I can do things better in my own role here. So it's always a good learning experience, and I was happy to see some of the councilors there later on for the event.
And the councilors that could make it, and did go there, all also went to different seminars, and nobody went to the same one, so that we got at least three or four different sessions.
Make sure you check yourselves in for all of them, you can still do it through the app, and what's important is that the communication goes back to our insurance agency, so the more times we hit those things of being trained on things, it can have small decreases to our rate, but it's good coverage on many things as possible. And we're going to continue to have Maya come and train us up on different topics here to, to you to try to work on that rate. And also, one other note is the senior center had a pipe burst today, but Chief Flanagan and others are working incredibly hard to clean up that building and get it back up and operational, which I'll have a further report for in the future.
And even though the senior center is closed, they will be having senior lunches at the O'Connell-
Down Golden Drive.
Down on Golden Drive. There is a room there, as well, and lunches will be there tomorrow. Does anyone have anything else they would like to say? We have one public relation about the upcoming event of January 26th. The Winter Chamber of Commerce is having their community awards dinner at the Cottage Park Yard Club at 7:00 PM. And with that, I have nothing else, does anyone else have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn is made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here we've done all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Council meeting is adjourned.